Four o'clock. I'd like to call this a regular meeting of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission to Order. First item on our agenda is approval of the agenda for November 5th, 2013.
Our new technology's not working.
I had to move digitally.
You want to use my iPhone to record this? I guess I'd look for a motion to approve the agenda for today.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
We have an agenda. Next item is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on October 1st, 2013. Any corrections, comments to those minutes?
I move that we accept the minutes as they were sent.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Propose, same sign that motion carries. Next item is a financial report for September 2013. Staff?
This is Anderson with staff. This is at the end of 2013, so that's at 25 percent of the year. If you look through there, you can see we're at Activity 5700, Planning and Zoning Totals, at the bottom of page. The first page you have there shows us at 24 percent for that. And at revenue, we're at 24 percent of revenue, so we're right about where we should be at 25 percent of the year.
Okay. Look for a motion to receive that financial report and place it on file. Pass up to council.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Propose, same sign. That motion carries. Next is oral presentations. This is for anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to anything that's not on today's agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on to our agenda items. First is a special permit request. This is a request by Faith Evangelical Lutheran Church for a special permit to allow for the construction of a 3,330 square foot addition to the church located at 1555 West Ridgeway Avenue. Staff report?
This is Andaro with staff. Applicant is requesting to construct a 3,330 square foot addition on the western side of their building. Property in question is owned to R3 Multiple Resident District and has been zoned as such since the adoption of the ordinance. To the north, a single-family residence and multiple-family residence zoned R3. South, a single-family residence as well as multiple-family residence zoned R3. East, a single-family residence zoned R1. And west, professional office development zoned R4 CZ. Based on the size of the proposed development, it would appear that it would be necessary to submit an updated stormwater retention plan to the engineering department for review. Engineer has also noted that a SWIP plan will need to be turned in based on the amount of ground that will be disturbed during the project. Proposed addition would be constructed over a grass area. If appropriate steps are taken to mitigate stormwater runoff, it would appear that the request would not have a negative impact upon the surrounding area. Zoning ordinance requires that a religious facility obtain a special permit issued by the Board of Adjustment after a recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is due in part that a religious facility may be developed in many zoning classifications, as well as the impact such a development can have on other public infrastructure, such as traffic, sewer, et cetera. The existing parking lot on the site contains a total of 64 parking stalls, and the zoning ordinance requires that a religious facility provide one parking space for each four persons of the maximum occupancy of the sanctuary, auditorium, or main hall as provided by the currently adopted building code. Based on the four 13-foot pews and 16-foot pews, the building inspections department has determined that the occupancy for the sanctuary is 227. Based on the zoning ordinance calculations for parking, a total of 57 parking stalls would be required. Therefore, the proposed addition is in compliance with the parking regulations for this request. There is a parking expansion shown on the submitted site plan, however, it is noted that the parking expansion is separate from the proposed project. Proposed addition would be sided with a brick siding, which is conducive to the existing siding on the current structure, as well as numerous windows will be added to the new expansion. Also, the new expansion will have a height of approximately 20 feet. In discussion with the architects per project, there are no plans to utilize the former sanctuary area for worship purposes, rather that space will be used for office use and multipurpose uses such as hosting dinners. Staff recommends that the request to construct a 3,330 square foot at sanctuary addition to the existing church facility located at 1555 West Ridgeway be approved for the following reasons. Request would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area and would appear to be compatible with the surrounding area. Request would not appear to have a negative impact upon traffic conditions in the area. Request is in accordance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map for this area and subject to the condition that the final site plan meets all city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera. Any questions for staff?
Dan, can you tell me what a SWIP plan is?
A SWIP plan is a storm water pollution prevention plan.
Okay. So, should we, under subject to the following conditions, should that be added to that since that was a specific thing that the city engineer said that he would need?
It can be, but usually that's covered under drainage. But you definitely can add that on if you want.
I just wanted to make sure we had everything covered and I didn't see it there, so.
Any other questions for staff? Would anybody in the audience like to speak to this special permit request?
I'm Jeff Oldman with Envision Architects, a church member and work for Envision Architects doing the project. Tim did a great job of explaining.
Please come to the microphone there and name and address real quick.
Okay. Jeff Oldman with Envision Architects. I'm a member and represent Envision Architects on this. Tim did a great job of explaining what we're doing. Currently, we worship out of a, the building was set up in the 80s, and it had always been planned to add a sanctuary to it. Currently, we've been worshiping out of a multipurpose space for many, many years. And now, the congregation has kind of voted to move forward with a little larger facility for worship. So, it's a simple addition off to the west side, and really, like Tim said, it doesn't really affect anything in the area. It's got a pretty large lot and so forth.
Okay. Questions for the applicant?
You're not going to move the big rock, are you?
Nope. Not even going to try. Thank you.
Thanks. Any comments discussion on the request? Oh, sorry.
Hello, my name is Brendan Dillon. I live at 3318 West Ridge Drive, just down the hill from the church. And I have a concern. Right now, we're getting a lot of water coming down there, and in fact, in the past, they've put up some ridges and some railroad ties to try to do this, but when it's really raining heavy, it's like a river flowing right down between my house and the house next door where the Reverend Wegener used to live before he moved to the Village Cooperative a couple of weeks ago. And so, I'm concerned about the amount of water that's coming down now. And I, with this new addition, I'm concerned about the water retention plan and what they're going to do about that, and also what they're going to do about the amount of water that's coming down to our house right now, which is causing, you know, water in the basement and settling water outside our house. So, that's my concern. I think it's great they're expanding a mall for our expansion, and I think the church is a great church. I have nothing against the church. My only concern is the water issue. Thank you.
Do you want to, do you want to speak to the detention area at all? I'm looking at the site plan, and I see a current one.
Yeah, I know there's a retention pond area, detention basin, set up on the northeast corner of the site. I was not aware of any water issues through there. Kenny Mossy, the head trustee, I kind of was not aware of it at all at either. So, we can look at it, but there's news to us. Yeah, we're not aware of railroad ties there currently.
They took them out a year or two ago.
Okay. I mean, we can look into it, but surprised to us, really.
Okay.
The expansion of the parking lot is not part of this?
No, no. We see that there may be a need down the road, but at this time, it's planned for future, and that's what.
Right. And I would assume that maybe the engineer, staff could comment on this, but at that point, there would be a need for adequate?
Absolutely.
Stormwater retention based on the size of a new parking lot.
Correct. Yeah, any work that would have to be done on that east side, yeah, we would have to go through the civil practice and get that retention corrected and maintained.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience like to speak to the special permit request? I'm going to bring it to the commission for discussion or comments.
This is Tack, and I have a question. If we go ahead and approve that, do we, would it be approved the way that it's written with understanding that Envision will be working to see about addressing that, or is that something that has to be in as a condition?
I think there's a condition already in there, subject to drainage, parking, landscaping drainage. I mean, it's all, comes under the city code, and so, the code's going to stipulate what they need for retention ponds, et cetera. So, I think it would be covered under that.
I would hate to hold up the process. It seems like maybe the first step for the gentleman would have been to contact the church and set up a meeting to see what kinds of solutions that you could find that would help you. I know sometimes we're quick to judge, and we think, you know, that the problem lies in one thing when it could be coming from something totally different. So, I would encourage you to reach out to the church members, and I'm sure that they will be as accommodating as possible.
This is Anderson with staff, too. And of course, this is a special permit, so it goes to the Board of Adjustment two weeks later, so that'll give city staff and Envision staff some time to look at this a little bit more to make sure that there's no problems with the project causing more problems, or if there's a way to fix the problems that are out there.
Okay. Any other comments? See none, look for an action item?
Make a recommendation we approve with the staff's condition that the site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the special permit request, subject to the staff conditions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Propose. That motion carries. As Noel mentioned, that'll move on to the Board of Adjustment here in a couple of weeks. So, we can address any concerns between now and then. Next is another special permit request. This is a request by Peterson Contractors, Inc. for a special permit to allow for the placement of fill on a property in order to grade the property for future development, generally located on 12 acres of land at the south end of Marnie Avenue, just south of Cyclone Drive. Staff report?
This is Western with staff. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area, as the area is zoned for industrial uses, of which this property would be used for once the infill is completed. The area is served by Highway 63, which is classified as a major arterial. The development of this site would increase the traffic conditions in the area. However, the streets are able to handle the additional traffic. The zoning history, the site is zoned M1 Light Industrial. It's located along Highway 63, just south of Cyclone Drive and Marnie Avenue. To the north, there's vacant land, and United Parcel Service is zoned M1. To the south, there's vacant land and commercial uses, zone A1 and M1. To the east, there's vacant land and commercial uses, zone A1 and M1. To the west, Highway 63 and vacant land, zoned BP Business Park. The area in question has been zoned as such since the adoption of the zoning ordinance adopted in 1969. The request would need to meet any applicable codes and ordinance requirements for drainage. No other drainage problems or concerns are known for this site. Flood plain, no portion of the property is located within the flood hazard area. The comprehensive plan and future land use map designates this area as business park, professional offices, commercial light industrial. A rubble fill site is allowable in this district upon issuance of a special permit. The applicant has indicated that there would be approximately 6,700 cubic yards of fill to be used on the property in order to build it up for future warehouse building. With the designation of a rubble fill site, the applicant must abide by the regulations set forth by the Black Hawk County Health Department and submit a rubble site application. Corresponding fee, a cash bond and security bond to be posted, and a plan detailing what fills to be used and to what elevation the area is to be filled to. The applicant has indicated that the current elevation of the ground is between 862 to 870 feet above mean sea level, and is proposing to raise the elevation to 866 to 870 feet above mean sea level. Therefore, staff recommends the special permit request be approved for the following reasons. The site seems appropriate for this use based on the industrial location of the site. The rubble fill site is permitted use in the M1 zoning district with the issuance of a special permit. The proposed fill would not appear to have a negative impact on the area and would have a positive impact by providing for development of the site.
Any questions for staff? Some questions for staff. Anybody in the audience like to speak to the permit request?
I'm here to answer the questions that we need to.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for applicant? See none, look for discussion or motion?
This is Cox, make a motion that we approve this special permit request.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the special permit request. All those in favor?
Aye.
Propose, same sign. That motion carries.
I'm seconded, then.
Tack it.
Thank you.
And on to our next item on the agenda. This is a vacate request. This is a request by the city of Waterloo to vacate a portion of West 17th Street located north of Black Hawk Street. Staff report?
This is Western with staff. The request to vacate the 10,000 square foot portion of Dead End, 17th Street, between 1827 and 1907 Black Hawk Streets. The request to vacate the unused Dead End portion of 17th Street would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding neighborhood. In fact, it would help to provide more area for redevelopment. The request to vacate the Dead End portion of 17th Street would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic. The area was platted as a public street, but has never been utilized. There is a 36-inch storm sewer located within the area to be vacated. Therefore, an easement will have to be retained over the entire area. There is also overhead electric in the area to be vacated. The future land use map designates this area as industrial, and this request would be in compliance with such designation. The site is located within the primary growth area as designated on the growth area map within the comprehensive plan. The request to vacate the remaining solidly portion of the platted 17th Street will make additional property available for future commercial development. The city is actively working to purchase 1827 Black Hawk Street to demolish to make more room available for redevelopment. The city currently owns 1823 Black Hawk Street that will be demolished and made available for redevelopment. Therefore, staff recommends the request to vacate approximately 10,000 square feet of unused platted alley be approved for the following reasons. The request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic in the area. The request to vacate is in accordance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map for this area. The request would appear to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance, and the request would appear to create an additional, additional land for future development of the area. And subject to, there'd be a utility easement placed over the entire area to be vacated.
Any questions for staff? See none, anybody in the audience like to speak to this vacate? See none, look for discussion from the commission or motion?
I move that we vacate this street.
Second.
Subject to the conditions.
I have an amendment. Do we have a second on that?
Yes.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the vacate request, subject to the utility easement. All those in favor?
Aye.
Propose, same sign. That request passes. Next is a street naming. This is a request, again, by the city of Waterloo to rename the north-south portion of existing East Ridgeway Avenue of Savaya Drive. Staff report?
This is Grandma Staff. City of Waterloo is proposing the renaming of a portion of existing West Ridgeway Avenue, which does run north-south from the existing east-west section of West Ridgeway Avenue and San Marnon Drive. East Ridgeway Avenue is primarily an east-west street, with the road initially ending at the intersection with San Marnon Drive. However, the city recently created a new intersection with East Ridgeway Avenue and at Laporte Road, which is the new endpoint of the east-west road. The north-south portion of the street still remains named East Ridgeway Avenue, which can be confusing to motorists. To avoid any confusion, the city is proposing to rename that north-south portion of East Ridgeway Avenue as Sylvia Drive. In addition, the former Kmart Plaza is being completely redeveloped, and along with that redevelopment, new addresses will need to be issued. Sylvia Drive would then be the street that that new commercial development would be addressed from. The engineering department has reviewed the naming of the street and recommends approval of the renaming of that portion of East Ridgeway Avenue to Sylvia Drive.
Questions for staff? No questions for staff? Anybody in the audience like to speak to the street naming? See none, look for a motion from the commission?
I move that we accept the renaming of Sylvia Drive.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the street naming requests. All those in favor?
Aye.
Propose, same sign. That street will be renamed once it gets to the council. Next is a plan in study. This is an extension of the city Limits Urban Revitalization Area, also known as the CLARA program, for an additional three years. Staff?
And dare, I'll just go briefly, or go over briefly. Essentially, we're asking for a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission of the city council, an extension of the CLARA for another three years. Just briefly, in March 2010, Mayor Clark put together the Grow Residential Opportunities in Waterloo Committee. What they kind of did was analyze past and current housing trends in the city, values of homes, lots being created and available in the city. He also evaluated what other communities in the area have been doing to spur their housing growth as well. After extensive review of programs and the need to try to stimulate more housing growth in Waterloo, the Grow Committee recommended the three-year adoption of the city Limits Urban Revitalization Area, which is known as the CLARA, for one- and two-family construction only. The council adopted the CLARA in July 2011 to allow for the three-year tax payment on the one- and two-family dwellings, and this program's set to expire in July of 2014. Just as far as trends go, there was a downward trend in single-family housing, with 42 houses in 2007, or FY 2007, 21 single-family in FY 2008, and 28 single-family in FY 2009. FY 2010, 11 and 12 are somewhat skewed by flood recovery activities, boosting the numbers to 38, 55, and 62. While some flood recovery remains, staff believes the FY 2012 numbers were helped by the CLARA adoption, as well as the 45 units in FY 2013, and currently, there are 21 to date in FY 2014. Staff has had multiple conversations with developers, landowners, homeowners, and house buyers. They believe the CLARA has had a positive impact on new housing starts in the city. Therefore, staff is requesting that the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission make a recommendation on extending the CLARA for additional three years. Once that is made, we forward it on to the city council.
Any questions for staff?
So, that you talked with developers about what their future plans were, did they give you any indication as to any of the negative aspects, or why they weren't using the CLARA more to build more houses or more building expansions?
This is Anderson with staff. I don't know that they talked about any of the negatives of why they weren't using it more. Obviously, they look at and build what they think the market can take. A lot of them have indicated that a lot of the home builders, their houses that they were building now, the homeowners had noted that they built in Waterloo because of the CLARA benefit, and that they were looking at other communities prior to that and chose to come back and look here, and that has helped them. Of course, we are rapidly running out of lots to build in Waterloo, so we're hoping that the CLARA extension will help some of them see the longer-term benefit and investment to go out and plot lots and get some more lots out there for development.
Is there anything, is there a concerted effort being made to see what accommodations can be made for developers so that we can get more properties built? I just look at the expansion that's going on in Cedar Falls in comparison to the growth that we're seeing in Waterloo. And I think we're building just as nice houses, and they're being built in just as nice developments, but, you know, we're just not seeing the same number of numbers coming from Waterloo. So, I'm just wondering, is there any concerted effort or a plan of action that the city's put together to try and make that a change?
We have worked, we worked pretty heavily with the Waterloo Community Schools for the location of Orange School, to try and provide three sides of that for residential development, as opposed of putting it on a corner and only having two sides abutting it. So, that was one of the efforts we did with the new Orange School. And of course, Orange School was also built to be a little bit larger than the other schools to accommodate more growth. And again, part of that was hopefully to get some housing around there. The city of Waterloo, you'll see in the next month or so, will be letting a contract. It's been under design since the Orange School location was chosen, but we'll be extending a sewer main for sanitary sewer service over from Hammond over to the Orange School area. That sewer is located in the lowest possible location on the land. I don't know if Eric wants to talk more about it, but essentially, it will serve that entire area for new housing developments if they build streets and infrastructure to hook onto it. Whereas before, it was not served by sewer, so it would have been a lot expensive for a developer to come along and have to want to build this area but bring the sewer from so far away. We did a similar, large sewer main extension near the Audubon Park area a number of years back as well, to get that portion of the south part of Audubon Park was no longer served by sewer. We brought a sewer main extension over from near Shawlison 63 down, and again, through the lowest part of the land, so it serves the largest amount of area. So, we've taken some steps to try and make it more friendly for developers to come here and build, and now we just need them to step up and do that.
This is Tack, and I have a question. Is the CLARA, is that only for one- and two-family homes, or is that also into apartments and condos, or is it strictly?
And that was a large discussion originally with the Grow Committee, whether or not it should be for all new residential. The Grow Committee really wanted to emphasize one- and two-family homes is where we were not seeing enough growth in their eyes, and so, it is just eligible for one- and two-family homes. The CURA, on the other hand, of course, it's in a defined area of the community, primarily the central part of the city, and a little bit larger part of the north side of the city or the east side. The CURA is eligible for any residential, any commercial, any industrial.
Okay.
This is Whitehead. Of the 45 units for fiscal year 2013, did all those receive the CLARA? Because you have to apply, correct?
Correct. They are, they're all eligible to CLARA. You're actually eligible for it, I think, up to two years after completing your structure. I think there was one or two of them that turned it in late, so they won't be getting it this year, but they will still get the full three years starting next year. But yes, they all should have taken advantage of the CLARA. All of our staff hands out the forms when new permits are taken out, either to their contractor or to the homeowner.
And it's active upon permit date, not upon completion date or application date? Because in my mind, I'm thinking taxes are in arrears. If I hold that for a year, year and a half, I could technically have four to five years of tax.
Correct. The assessor's office will work with the homeowner to make it to the most beneficial. So, let's say you build your house, and the first time the assessor comes out in February 1, only half of your value is on there because it's only halfway done. And you've turned in the form, they will start the three years going, but when the second half of your value comes on, they'll start that on a separate three years. So, you won't lose, you won't have a year at half-value because you'll gain it in the end, so I mean, you'll still get the full value with. in the end, so I mean, you'll, you'll still get the full value with the three years. And you're right, since taxes are always behind, it could essentially be four years before you pay a full-toothed tax.
Depending on when you applied. Any other questions for staff? Hearing none, look for a recommendation, a motion with a recommendation on this?
So moved.
Recommend, go to extend it?
Yeah. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to recommend extending the CLURA for an additional three years. All those in favor?
Aye.
Repose. That recommendation will go on to council. Next item on our agenda is discussion. Does staff have anything for us? Yeah, I had it written down. The only thing, and Eric was nice enough to remind me, today is the day to vote, so exercise your right, vote for your favorite candidates. Unless there's anything else, look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.